Don't mind that.
Eyes of pig riding a, what is it, dummy pigman riding a chicken in the nether?
No, my door's green.
Chicken jockey?
Chicken jockey! Chicken jockey!
Yeah.
Release!
I don't know if I've seen that one yet. I don't know, I've just seen like a compilation.
Yeah.
Flint and steel!
Flint and steel.
What's in another? I haven't been here yet.
Not a lot.
The nether!
See, uh, blue dude tried to trap you in here.
Blue dude, we need to go deeper. Oh, look.
We need to, we need to come fast pause.
He's a miner! He's a miner!
Yo.
Yo, we're already starting this off that way? What?
Speed bridging in the nether?
Where is?
Over a big lava pool?
Oh my goodness? Where's the nether fortress? We're gonna follow these blocks.
I don't even wanna be.
The nether!
It's just a random generated block right there, dude.
I haven't found anything, I'm gonna be just running.
Chicken jockey!
Chicken jockey!
Release! An ender pearl!
I don't remember the ender pearl. This is a crafty.
Yeah, let me watch the trailer again, let me just block myself for a minute.
You yearn for the mines.
Okay, I'll play it. I'll play it through my mic.
Chicken jockey!
I'm not gonna be able to pick it up.
Hell well.
Release!
You okay, blue? Blue, what's happening to you?
There. Oh, this is the final trailer.
But AMI re-gen potion came in handy for once.
Oh.
Kinda, kinda guess.
I just, I server muted it. Uh, Jay, do you still have your stun?
Yeah.
You do?
Uh, did you turn keep inventory off?
Is it off?
No, it's not.
I'm not even muted, bro.
Can we keep it that way?
Uh, yeah, let's keep it that. I thought, I, the server just turned on, so I thought, okay. Alright, that's good then. Alright, cool. Keep inventories on, guys, we're good. I thought it, I left it off for a second.
Chicken jockey! Yo, who wants to go find diamonds with me?
Uh... I'm pretty dripped out, I can't lie.
Or who wants to start the mending?
Mending!
Mending?
Together we are Minecraft.
You were supposed to be a hero, Brian!
I think I like that name.
Hello, chomper!
You were supposed to be a hero, Brian? Huh. I think I like that name.
Brian. Oh my god. Oh shit, well that's a...
So if we're not gonna be building anything crazy in this server, should we have another town hall meeting? To discuss what we're gonna do, cuz I know you wanna do...
That's actually a good idea.
Yeah, we're gonna, we're gonna just, uh, town hall meeting. Alright, town hall meeting. Right now.
Cuz...
I'm in the nether.
The nether!
I'm fifty feet under.
Oh wait, you could, you put these signs down.
Yeah, but I don't really wanna comment up right now.
That's what we're trying to do.
Hey! Don't say that about yourself, man.
Yo, I think, I think we should still have a government though, I'm not gonna lie.
One in the closet.
Thank you, chomper, it was kind of...
You went in.
Well... I was killed in the closet.
I feel blessed now.
Yeah, me too, eh?
You came out of the closet!
I feel motivated.
Beat the ender ground, beat the weather.
Are we having a town hall meeting?
Yes, we are.
Chuck E. Cheese. Where's Chuck E. Cheese?
So...
Uh...
The server is not gonna last long.
Yeah, I'll be there in a sec, guys.
There's gonna be another server where we're gonna build. This server is gonna be more for like, I guess, doing, like, structures, like, these thingies. Cuz we're gonna get the update soon. We're gonna get the update soon.
Well, a- are we? Or is it gonna be the endless spring?
Chicken jockey!
Are you guys, are you guys coming? You both in the nether?
We're on both sides.
The nether!
Alright, I, I can end myself quickly.
I mean, I'm kinda like...
The nether! Chicken jockey!
Yeah, not really though, I'm kinda like, I'm in a bunch of blocks right now. Yeah, wow! Oh, 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 alright, yeah. Alright, yes, king, I'll be on my way. Okay, give me a sec, lemme, lemme find a spot to kill myself, cuz I haven't, I don't really have a bed and I'm mining right now, in the nether. Oh, hold on.
What's up, king?
Oh, I found my way out!
Don't look at this, don't look.
You gotta block it with your shields.
Ta-da, da! This is private information.
We need, we need to discuss this during the meeting, not right now. I can't have you remove it.
Um... Um...
I don't know.
I was just getting my accent.
I don't know.
Let's talk about this during the meeting.
Chicken jockey!
Colton, you want to hit the bridge? I'm looking at the, where is he? I'm so...
We're all here.
He's in the closet.
We're all here.
He just happened to be in there.
Alright, everyone, take your seats, take your seats.
Take your seats. There's no way I can put this on a summon. Okay.
Yeah.
Bless us!
I can make two.
Bruh.
Nah, give it back then, what the fuck? No, that's why I needed it, so I can make two. I have seven.
Chicken jockey! Man, my brain's rotted.
Oh.
Yo, chomper. I think it's time to get serious.
Take your seat? We, no one's, no one's in this.
Inventory is too full.
I'm in my seat, bro.
I think it's time to get serious.
Stop, stop.
Oh god.
Any stop? I'm not even looking that way.
Dude, we gotta be serious.
It's a town hall. Well, can cats just stop placing random blocks? I'm not even looking that way.
What's wrong with you?
Hey, 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 hey!
Hold on, I gotta take my armor off.
Yeah.
Oh, okay, yeah, 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 alright. I'll be peaceful, I'll be peaceful. Okay, everyone, everyone, okay, we need to discuss right away, what are we gonna do with the server? Who's got ideas? What do we wanna do? So the Minecraft update isn't planning on coming until spring. Now, by then, chomper, you'll be finished your, uh, your, your courses, right? When do you, when do you finish your stuff? When do you finish your course?
Uh, like mid-April?
Uh, Bronz, when do you finish your course?
Early May.
Uh, Cats and Colton, how busy do your schedules get in like May? Dude, my hardest class is English. Uh, Jay, you're...
Yeah, fucking good.
You're always cool, right? I don't know.
Uh, depends, because, uh, early May, I turned twenty and I'm going to California, so... I won't be...
Damn, you old as hell, what the hell?
Yo! Yo, that's... That is...
Brother!
Not him!
We're like eighteen to twenty, what do you mean? I'm nineteen.
Okay, so, that goes back to my question, for the remainder of this time, now, we don't have a lot of time in the server, because we're, we are busy and half of us are on March break right now, but like, for the rest of the server, we're only, like, we, we have, we have a lot of time, like, we got three months.
Yo! I got chomper's seed!
He's throwing money, bro.
Wasn't, that's...
I got his seed!
All, can you guys prove to me that you don't have ADHD for one moment? We need to make a pole, we need to make a pole in the middle, knock him off.
Oh.
Yo, no, no!
Of the things that are happening, we, we do need that male strip club to, to let people let off steam.
That is so true.
Cause I added it as the, the ninth goal, the ninth goal I added it.
Wait. Yeah, yeah, yeah.
If I, if you guys don't stop, Tom, I'm gonna shut down the server, I don't care.
Heyo! But I'm just moving seeds! Okay.
Can we lock in for a second?
Lock in, lock in.
Lock in, lock in.
Alright, alright.
Locked.
Stop server.
No, 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 we're locked in.
Look how much attention is being put on you, man.
Okay.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Chicken jockey!
We're paying very close attention to you.
As I was saying, what do we want the future of the server to be?
The nether!
Who wants, what's our next goal? Do we wanna do a level five raid?
Level five guyet?
Do we wanna, do we wanna raid an ocean? Do we wanna raid, uh, do we wanna beat the end? Do we wanna kill the weather? What's our next goal?
We should find a woodland mansion right, for our next goal right now.
I'm really building Chuck E. Cheese.
We need to do this in order. We should do this in order, like the way it's written. So, next thing we should do is find a woodland mansion. So we can cross this off.
Well, is that, is that our next goal? Find a woodland mansion?
I vote for number four.
What are the chances of that again?
Explore trial chamber, those are hard to find. We can find a woodland mansion easily.
You can...
Well, you can trade with villagers for maps, you can trade with villagers for maps.
Yeah, let's get a vill, okay, let's get a villager, uh, thing going, like, we need mending. We need mending for our armor and we need, uh, maps for cryptographers, right? Let's get that going.
Chicken jockey!
Okay.
Man, my...
People, other people who are like, lower, like, get netherite loot if you want, but like, people who wanna work on this, work on that, if you wanna work on your armor, work on that. If you wanna work on your house, work on that, work on something, uh, or just, or, or, or don't work, you're here to have fun, I guess.
Together we are Minecraft.
But everyone needs to come together, once we have those town hall meetings, to go do these things.
Yeah. These town hall meetings are obviously very productive.
What are we, what are we doing?
Does anyone, does anyone got food?
Yeah.
I wasn't pegatized at all, what are we doing?
Okay.
Who needs food?
Oh yeah. Nick, what are we doing?
I will take anything, bro.
Who? Fethers? You?
Could use a, could use a post-meeting email.
I'm spamming everything.
Bro.
Yeah, I need, I need a, I need an update on it.
Holy care.
He was sick that day.
I, yeah, I was sick today, can you like hit me up with the summary?
He needs a, yeah, he needs a summary.
What are we doing?
There's, there's, there's food and stuff in the chest if you need it.
Oh, I didn't...
Make sure, like, it's still organized.
All I heard is, oh, you're in a woodland mansion.
That's the next goal.
Wait, I forgot I wasn't wearing any armor.
Leave him alone!
Running to find... Okay.
The nether!
Oh, nevermind, cats got you, that's good, double bay.
I did not.
If somebody wanted to work, wanna work on getting netherite, uh, nether skulls, that'd be great. Weather skulls, I don't know.
Someone uploading? It's okay, I'll eventually kill you if, if I come...
Stop it!
I'll eventually kill you.
If I kill them, if I kill them with the fortune pickaxe, do I have, do I have a higher chance?
We have a Fletcher? We have a Fletcher?
Oh my.
I think I died from the crow's eye, maybe.
I don't, I'm a fear.
The nether! Man, my brain's rotted. Oh, it's over.
Alright, well.
Oh, it's so bad.
Goodbye, blue dude.
You know what's crazy? I'm on one heart.
Yeah, I know, I hit you like so many times.
The ne, oh my goodness.
Ow. I defended you, or I attempted to defend you. What about that? Oh, I see, I see, I see. Hey, blue dude, blue dude, I won't, I won't hit you once, but you need to follow me.
Hit him, yeah!
Uh, I didn't say anything specific, I just said you need to follow me.
I, I don't wanna follow you.
We can have a fun time together. Are you still bowling away, by the way?
Yeah.
I'm not following you.
I don't care, I actually, oh shit, I don't have any food.
What, cats? Follow you, alright.
The nether? Oh dude, my brain's just rotted.
Oh.
Oh, that, nice one, go ahead.
Say goodbye to our portal, I bet.
I broke the portal.
I think I have an idea what you guys were doing.
I did just see where, I did see where...
Um... Were, were you?
How many beds do you have?
Okay, so we're, our portal's a little different now.
Please don't tell me there's lava pouring into this water.
Do I even wanna know what happened?
Oh my god, wait, where are we?
The net, okay.
Where's the original portal?
Oh my god, he spawned a new portal, cuz the old one...
Where's the original portal? I've actually lost. Bronz, can you come through?
Oh my god, there's no way. It's at like zero, zero, basically. I can like... If I go through, I'm gonna go through the one you went through, though.
Yeah, just do the one I went through.
Oh my god, I should've seen that coming. I had an inkling of an idea. When I came through, I was like, wait a second, he's probably like really close to the portal, there's no way he doesn't see it.
No, there's not, it actually is a new portal and I don't know where it is. I just had, I had a feeling that I probably should've vet you.
Fool me once, shame on you. Fool me twice, shame on me.
Wait, I, I, I actually could do this time, I won't vet you, I swear.
Yeah, 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 I've, I've heard that one before. I've heard that one before.
I swear.
Let me, let me send it through air, a few arrows through the portal really quick.
There's nothing, that was actually almost, that actually almost hit me. If you aim it like a little, if you do it again?
Hold up, hold on, let me get closer, I'm like fifty blocks away.
Oh, wait, do a little straighter? Do a little straighter, odd? Like right in the middle of the portal, I'm directly in the middle. You're aiming to the left a little, lemme, lemme...
To the left, something's gonna go to the right, cuz the portal's mirrored. Alright, I'm wasting spectral arrows.
Oh, you're so close!
Okay, you just want spectral arrows. This is cap, this is so cap. This is cap. Nah, I'm good.
Here, come through the portal.
People are getting diamonds, they're self iron armor, you want me to shoot you through a portal?
Bronz, come through the portal.
I'm good, I'm, I'm so good.
I, I swear, I won't.
Colton, you hang out with cats the most, is he lying?
On my life, I swear I won't, Bronz.
Uh, maybe.
Maybe?
Bronz, on my life, I swear I won't.
Would it be surprised if he's lying to you?
It looks through something different, it looks weird.
I'm, I'm not just not surprised, I've been expecting it.
No, he, he's, no, he's lying, he's lying.
I'm literally like twenty blocks away from the portal.
He's lying, bro.
I'm not, bro! What do you need? I just needed to make myself...
You're, you probably are twenty blocks over the world, but when I come through, I have a feeling you're gonna get a little closer and you're gonna have a bed in your head.
I'm not gonna move. I'm standing on netherack.
Chomper, tell me, tell me what he's doing.
I'm s, exactly what I said.
Chomper, give me comms, what is he doing right now?
Standing.
Just standing there menacinging you?
I'm confident, he's on a, he's on a pillar, it's pretty much, that's it.
Alright.
This biome sucks.
Why, wha, wait, if he can see you, then why would he need me? Cats.
I don't even have any more beds.
Cats.
He's lost one.
I may be stupid.
Does the other portal go to another way?
Also, blue dude, I just noticed you changed it to only three people, you were the goat.
Netherack there. Off the side of the man.
Oh, finally, holy shit!
That's where the old portal is.
Finally found one of these fuckers.
Here, Bronz, come through, it's safe, chomper can vouch.
I could literally hear you smiling.
No, it actually is! I mean, you won't die, and another, asshole.
There's no reason for me to go through other than to say I am.
He's bullshit-ing you so hard.
No, no, the two portals stacked on each other.
I don't even think that could happen.
It did! Chomper, it literally did. It's just sitting on top. It's like connected.
I'm looking at that, cats, you can have fun looking at that by yourself.
No, please, Bronz, I won't kill you. Here, I'll move away, I'll, I'll move further away.
The smile in your voice is so obvious right now.
Yeah, it's pretty, it is pretty obvious. Okay, I'll...
You didn't even try to hide it.
I'm about to start streaming, I'm about to start streaming.
Uh, I don't use Twitch.
Oh my god. I'm not lying!
I'm not even gonna click on the stream, I'm busy. I have no time for your shenanigans.
The nether?
It's actually so weird.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
They're literally stacked on top of each other, you just don't want...
I'm trying, I'm trying to get a fortune free pick, I have got stuff to do.
No, you have nothing to do. Yes, I'm gonna die. I'm about to die, magma's climbed.
Alright.
Blue, what'd you say?
I'm online.
What happened to my farm?
Is anyone at the portal?
Uh, cats, cats is gonna be there in a second, I can tell you that, man.
Guys, can you, uh, come outside? Like, just come outside?
Where are you?
Do you see a giant portal just sitting in the middle of nowhere?
Where are you?
On the lava lake, look at, oh, at the lava lake.
Um, I don't, I still don't know, are you in the nether?
The nether!
Look out at the lava lake.
My fault. Where?
Out on the lava lake, do you see just a random portal sitting up there?
I still don't see you.
You don't see a random portal? Wait, oh, you're sharing your screen, right?
Oh, but did he even go through the portal? Died, I don't know. I don't even think he's in the portal. Did you pull on my leg here? Yeah, I think this biome is cursed. You're actually pulling my leg. Nick, there's no side view anywhere.
Oh, that's great.
I might've cooked our portal, by the way.
Yeah, maybe.
Might have been the yes.
Yeah, we gotta like somehow bridge back up there. Do I have a good way to get levels? Wait, wait, we found a mob farm?
Of course. Uh, don't we have, uh... What's my caller? A spider spawner under us? A cave spider? We have a mine trap, right? Find a mine trap.
It's a little ways away, then.
Can we have a better nether? Does this other portal go to these different places? I... No, it's the same portal. Hold on, buddy. No, it's the same portal. I'm making a bridge up. This is safe, chomper, don't worry. Is there a better biome up there? Kind of.
You know, I was like, I, I'm getting prepared to go to the nether for a separate reason, and I'm like, oh, I won't need a flint and steel, there's a portal, but I probably do need a flint and steve.
Flint and steel!
For unknown reasons.
Chomper, if you go this way, if you go across, then there's a, the nether waste.
The nether!
It's over this way, though.
Oh my goodness, that bed explosion almost killed all my armor.
Oh, he tricked you again.
Yeah?
No!
No, that, that was a while ago.
No.
Yeah, I killed my armor too.
It's still, it's still almost break, broke my armor. Alright, cats, I have appeased you, I am in the nether.
I, look at the portals, they're stacked on top of each other.
Oh, damn, I've never seen that happen before.
Exactly, I'm not even, I'm not even there.
Usually I'd like, through the portal, I'd like go somewhere else.
It did.
You guys go to the nether?
The nether!
Yes.
We're in the nether right now.
I think everyone is in the nether, actually.
Nope. I'm trying to get bougie'd out, get diamonds.
What the hell happened to our portal room?
That is one hundred percent cats' fault.
No, you can't put the blame on me.
What do you mean?
That's not even funny.
I have nothing!
It's extreme, yes.
I have nothing!
It's not me.
Oh my goodness, there's lava in here, I didn't even see that. We can reignite this, though. I reignited the portal.
Okay.
Why? Do you have a vendetta against that portal?
Yeah.
What the f... Oh my, why is there just random lava?
Cats blew up a bed.
You know, buddy?
The nether!
My fault.
Whoops!
He did it, he did it, he did it on purpose, but like... Yeah, but I said, I said it was my fault, so like...
Sounds okay. I think you'll do it again, and you'll say it's your fault again.
I probably, I would do it again.
Yeah, he would, he would do it.
It was worth it.
I'm sorry, but I would do it again.
It was funny.
Yeah, exactly, exactly. No, even although I was the victim, I can support that logic.
It was funny.
This birch forest is so disgusting.
Bronz, would you say it was worth it?
Where are you guys?
The net enjoyment, yes, but for me specifically, probably not.
Morning for you specifically, yes, of course.
Oh yeah, it was very fun getting blown out.
You had fun.
I love it, though.
I mean, he was a lapless.
Hey, I need XP.
That's what I'm doing, that's why I'm bed farming, for XP. I went from like ten levels to twenty seven.
Ooh, W dark oak. Just now traveling outside of... Dude, dark oak? Hmm... The nether? Chicken jockey!
Do you have autism?
Yes.
I'm sure.
Oh my god. There's no way, I have five skeletons.
I, yeah, I think you're right, I, I think you're right.
Yeah. I don't know, I know, I've never messed with putting torches on nether's farmers. Of which there are only two. I kind of cleared out a little bit here. So... Is everybody just getting netherite, is that why you're all here?
I'm loving this place. What do you mean?
Man, the caves suck.
I know why cats is here.
Where am I?
I don't know, I don't know where you are anymore, but I have a feeling when I go back, there's gonna be a nice restful place for me to sleep.
What do you mean?
Maybe, I don't know.
Getting netherite.
Yeah, that's what I thought.
What do you mean, that's what you thought?
No, I meant it.
They're dishing me?
Okay, now you're trolling, now you're trolling in two different ways now.
You're trolling me, that's not funny, no. I don't even have full diamond, I'm just getting netherite.
Get this to our portal room.
I was actually thinking doing the same thing too, but I would have to get an efficiency three diamond pick anyway, so I'm just like, I'll just, I'm just gonna get the diamond on my first.
I'm just dead farming. We, we have a, a lot of sheep.
Oh, that's where you get all the dens from, it's become your new favorite weapon.
Becoming another just, but expect that to maybe be bad.
Maybe. Just on a few days of the week.
It's like gambling, but there's no good results.
There is no good result to gambling, most of the time.
Most of the time.
Most of the time, but you, you gotta be locked in, you have to, you have to be the one percent of gamblers that don't quit and win big.
That was a mistake.
The infinite percent, but do.
Oh, that's true.
I don't even know what I'm talking about anymore.
You can't, you can't disprove that you're not gonna win big the next time you gamble. So.
Exactly, now you're thinking.
Bridging over a giant lava lake is something interesting.
Hmm, will they find?
You can keep inventory. Yeah, Bronz, you have a bow, don't you?
Yeah. Probably the only one that carries a bow around with them in survival, early and mid, mid game.
I would, but.
Fortress right next to our portal room.
A year and three nines.
Understandable.
Okay, I just found a three vein nether.
Hello, chomper, are you also trying to get quartz?
Yes, I just need thirty levels, cuz, uh, there's a. There's a fortune three enchantment waiting, I'm gonna take last half, if I want that, I don't have no diamond lining.
Yeah, I kept a, I was a level of like thirty, but I took dummy roll, and now I'm at level, level twenty with a fortune three enchant in my table.
Oh. Sueing the diamonds with the arrows.
Blood is another waste, this next, this next.
Can't find a single. Damn cave.
There we go. I'm just gonna go netherite again. How many degree do I need? Like thirty-two?
Four for a piece, uh, per piece, so sixteen for all armor pieces.
Sword plus, uh, pickaxe, axe.
Yeah, I was on the counting, remember? If you want all the main tools, it's gonna be another four, which will be thirty-two in total.
Twenty thirty-two.
Another four if you wanna, the bow.
That's all I need to hear.
Bro, sold.
That's all I need to hear. I don't even have full diamond, I need diamonds.
There's no border anymore, right? Uh, there is, but it's like smaller, why?
It's smaller than it was before?
Wait, it's smaller?
Oh, bigger, bigger.
Bigger.
There we go.
It says something like a thousand.
Size matters.
Size matters?
Yeah.
It does.
I mean, that's easy for me to say, you know? Maybe not other people.
You're so funny, Bronz. I wanna be just like you.
Uh, Bronz, you got the whole squad laughing.
Chill out, bro.
Oh my god, Bronz, lays me up already.
What is, is today bully Bronz day, what's going on? I get blown up and.
Bronz, you got me laughing my knees right now.
And then I just make a joke and I get bullied, what is this?
Give my kneecaps a break, will ya?
You guys, you guys are the target audience for those no bullying posters in school.
Thank you.
Oh, Bronz, I'm, I'm, I'm already, I'm already soaking to the thought of you.
Yep.
Yes, that's good.
That's good, Bronz.
Yeah.
I don't know if you're thinking about it the right way.
Oh no.
I don't, I don't think you're paying up what it's been done.
The right way, I'm just, I don't react cuz I'm so used to it.
You're used to it, okay.
This nether fortress. So much good loot.
Oh, calm down, Nick.
But there's so much good loot.
Is there enough for your lappers?
I don't have any lappers.
So.
The nether? Man, it's over for me.
What can I say except true? Bronz, you need a golden horse armor?
I would like one, yes, I need a revive cock command.
For, for, what will you buy it off of him?
I don't know, I don't have anything useful.
Capitalism. Can I, can I buy? In advance, hmm, what do I need?
You need his protection.
He already has my protection, he's the, the, the leader, and I'm law enforcement.
Dude, why did you say that? Now you just, you could've just said protection and not say anything.
I mean, as in like. I will never kill him again, probably not, because I could tell you I will kill him again at some point, probably.
The sheriff should not be saying that.
Oh, um.
Whoa.
Um. I need, I need, I need an HR department. Or PR, whatever it's called.
Mine collecting sources.
Man, I'm, I'm him, oh, I'm him.
Oh my, this is so much good loot.
Nick, I don't think we need that reaction.
Oh, there's so much, so big.
Thirty levels.
Alright.
The nether.
The nether. Oh, you're kidding me? It's okay, I survived long enough. Do we have an anvil?
I have one if you need one.
I have one in my house.
Okay. Hey Bronz, I will sell it to you for four diamonds, how about that?
Catch me outside, how about that?
I'd rather just go to a fortress and loot it myself. Why, why do you need the, the horse armor, are you just holding it above my head?
Uh huh.
Oh, that's the value it has to you, okay, I see. Everyone in the server just sees me as a. As a toy now, that's nice.
Exactly.
Heyo.
I think he learned that from bunkers.
I'd like to think that I'm more than a toy to bunkers.
Holdin', I respect that, I respect the fact that you have forty-eight diamonds just sitting in your chest.
Are you fucking?
Don't take them.
No, I won't, I won't.
I'm not the fucking, oh man, I traveled so far for that.
I res, I respect the fact, and I'm walking away.
Everyone else wasn't talking about it.
Interested in them.
Yeah, everybody just accepted that there were forty diamonds in that chest.
There's forty, but there's forty-eight.
There's forty-eight.
Exactly, see, he doesn't even know how much there is, cuz we're not as interested.
I'm, I'm not. I'm just holding it.
Yeah, how dare you, bro?
You lost?
What? Bro, I'm literally in the nether.
The nether.
Shut up, bro.
I was at like the worst bastion ever, I think it got, I think it got looted already, bro. Ooh, you know what we should craft in Echats? You, wait, what bastion did you guys loot, like what type of bastion? Cameron, do you have obsidian?
Hmm?
No.
I don't have lappers, no.
Who already went to a bastion?
Me.
What was it, like what type of bastion?
Uh, bridge.
Oh, well, that's probably the one I was at then.
Yeah, if it's, if it's underground, that's, that's the one.
Oh, wait, maybe it wasn't. I'm gonna go underground. I'm gonna die, bro. I got a lot of fire red potion, so I'm not really mad about that.
Man, I'm so cool.
I haven't found a fortress.
We already have all the, uh, materials to beat the game, me and Blue got them, so.
No, no.
You don't need to.
Bronz, we need an Echat.
Hello?
No, I know, I'm, I'm. I was just doing that so I can get, oh, netherite, I don't know.
Thank you so much.
Here.
No place to be inside of. Fortune.
You have a, you have obsidian, Bronz?
Oh, not obsidian, well, actually, I think I do have obsidian, cuz.
Yeah, that's what you need for an Echat.
Yeah, yeah, I do have obsidian, cuz I was gonna make the portal, but then you made it, so.
There's a one obsidian and AI.
Yeah, we have it, though. Do you have your, the obi?
Yeah. I have more than enough obi.
Nice. Where are you?
Sorry? I'm in another.
Oh.
The net, okay.
Lock in.
You're dragging it.
Lock in.
You know it's still massive, right?
Oh.
Look!
Oh, no, I'm not taking that. I'm not holding that.
My, my father's dead, what are we talking about?
She said mother, not you.
Oh. Come on. You're not wrong.
Oh.
I seen saying.
Yeah, there you go, there you go, taste of your own medicine, cats.
I meant to do it, I meant to do that, I meant to do.
Yo.
That's why it says intentional, yeah.
I meant to do.
Look, low tip of a.
Now you know what it's like.
I.
Although you, I think you blew both of us up.
I, I'm telling you, I meant to do that.
Are you, sure, buddy?
By the way, the server's getting, uh, taken down, right?
Eventually, uh, eventually.
Nah, I mean, no, you don't have to make a house, I don't care.
Let's go.
You can be homeless, you can, you can live in the town hall.
Basement of the community town hall, can I like make a basement?
We have, we have a basement, where? I, I, I'm, I'm asking, we have one?
I didn't know, I was gonna make one.
Yeah, this is majoring in actual cat behavior now.
Make the basement the gayster club.
Let's just make like, the town hall the biggest building ever, just make it like multi-store, like multi-leveled, and like branch out in like weird subsets.
Okay.
In the town hall.
I know, but which corner?
Um. Let me, let me, um. This, not the stairs, uh, chomper pop's corner is looking like a very good spot.
My corner cannot be.
Actually, yeah, this is like a secret, a secret, secret basement.
Oh.
You have to move the.
Inspired by Diddy's house.
Move the bed, the, I, like.
It's gonna be, it's, it. Yeah, but it's gonna be like Diddy's basement, it's gonna be cool.
Diddy's basement's cool, you're gonna have Drewski down there, you're gonna have Juiceki down there.
Maybe like put it under, under the, the bale or something.
Well, either way, this is the corner where it's happening.
Let's, the.
My sweet corner.
Diddy corner.
Oh, it, it's great, it's, oh. Do you have the, no, that's just the coke closet, what are you doing?
The closet?
Coke closet?
Closet. You're breaking the closet, Nick.
I might need to get.
Address it by its appropriate name.
How could this?
Um, that's a little. No, make it a staircase, what are you doing?
It'll work.
Oh, I, okay, fine, but you have to make an elevator, you're not doing ladders, ladders take way too long.
Then, I, I, I will be making staircase.
You'll be making a staircase? No, you can make a water elevator, those are cool.
That's a lot of work, man.
No, those are not, you get kelp.
That bottle worked.
True.
Sure, we have sixteen kelp right here.
How much kelp do I need?
Make it like fifteen blocks deep. We have sixteen.
How deep do I need that?
Uh, I wouldn't make it that deep, but like, no, why are you, why do you?
Oh my god.
Um, uh, I, I'd say about fifty.
Can I go to forty-five?
No.
And that is why you never dig down.
Fifty, fifty's pretty your limit.
There we go. What do I need then?
To make a. Uh. Uh, br, well, come back up and then place water down?
Is this where the other side is? Can I go up here?
Yeah.
Where'd I go up to?
Level one town hall text.
Level one guy at, okay.
Holy Rizler.
Rised up by Libby Dunn, in Ohio, really?
Okay, um.
Leave that there, leave that there. What about, Nick? Yeah, what's up? I got, I got block of quartz, I got two phones.
One for the plug and one for the home, got two phones.
Uh, whatever, it looks ugly, but, uh, so come back down here.
What do I need, bro?
Your kelp, do you have your kelp?
I'm not speaking my freaking language, yo.
You have kelp and dirt, I need a piece of dirt.
I have, I have.
Pack it, yo. Hand him a freaking pack it, yo.
I broke, I broke a block underneath the water, placed it there. Okay, now come back in the elevator.
Whoa, what is that?
And.
Finally.
Come back in the elevator.
Need soul sand, don't I?
Uh, no, not for kelp, just.
Can't expect him to learn if you, all you do is just hand him a pack, freaking pack it, yo.
Pass me the kelp, pass me the kelp, pass me the kelp. Pass me the kelp.
Dirt, dirt and kelp, does it make it go up or down?
Pass me the kelp.
Dirt doesn't work.
Pass me the.
Soul sand.
It's soul sand.
To go up. And magma to go down, it's why, oh, you guys are making an elevator.
This isn't.
Yeah, you need soul sand, not dirt.
It's soul sand.
Wait, did he try and use dirt?
He's tried to use dirt.
No, that's not, are you guys idiots? There's no, there weren't that many water blocks there, I fixed it by putting kelp there, now that's all water block.
Okay, well, yeah.
You have any soul sand?
No, I don't have soul sand, you have to go get some.
I don't, do you guys have any soul sand?
No.
Wait, who looted the nether fortress?
I didn't pick up any soul sand when I was there, or actually technically, technically Blue did, but he didn't pick up soul sand either.
Oh, gold left again.
Okay.
Guys, I'm gonna dip for a little bit.
I found a spawner, I found a zombie spawner. Zombie spawner. Uh, the cords are. Seventy-one.
Someone has soul sand.
I'm just gonna take a screenshot of these cords then.
Hey, you know what, cats, since you've been so nice to me today, I'm gonna go ahead and get you some soul sand.
That's actually good to know, wait, I think one of the.
Yeah, take a screenshot of cords or something, maybe.
I didn't take a screenshot, but I know just, basically if you go to spawn, it's not that far.
Yeah, yeah.
Where are you?
Uh, I went back to the coal blocks, cuz I thought I saw something, I think I'm mistaken.
Oh, I found a rune portal inside of a ship, shipwreck.
Did you go to the left of the monument or the right of it?
The right.
The right, okay.
Like, pretty much hard right. Found a treasure map.
Oh, I think I see you, actually, I see that, that combo of a.
No idea where the chest is.
It's probably not worth it, to be honest, since I have fortune three, like the diamonds we could get from it is probably not that much.
You always gotta look, it could be gavel.
I mean, yeah, I guess.
That's worth it, isn't it?
We could also just get a bolt.
Not like enchanted one.
Oh, I see, I see. I don't think I've ever gotten enchanted one from a buried treasure.
Oh, I was talking about the rune portal.
Oh. Did you loot it?
I, I didn't find the chest, but.
Oh, hold on, I've memorized, okay, well. Embarrassingly, I've memorized all the locations. Yeah, it's, it's, wait, did it overlap with the chest? There's no way. I think it did, it's all iron nuggets.
I took the iron note of that.
Oh, never mind then, it never has iron bits. It's somewhere in the sh, I don't, I mean, I don't, I don't really wanna, to be honest. Yeah. Oh, there we go, we gotta, we gotta keep our time limit in mind, remember?
Your time limit, you have an hour and thirty-five minutes left, you're good.
Okay, it looks like this is one, though, you see that ravine?
I do, but I don't know if it'd be worth it.
There might be a connecting cave, I'm gonna check.
I'll be honest, it doesn't look worth it.
Yeah, I think you're right, I'm not seeing any normal, uh, uh, abnormalities. Where'd you go? Oh, you were just, where'd you go?
You're going this way, I don't know.
Anyway, at this point.
I just want you to run to the monument.
Yeah.
Geode. Oh, that's a big hole.
Chicken jockey.
It doesn't look very promising, to be honest.
I, yeah, lie, it doesn't look that promising, I don't have to be bothered.
Yeah.
And there's another monument. I don't know if there'd be anything in the rivers.
No, there wouldn't be. Wait, hold on.
What?
This goes pretty deep.
Anything?
Uh, okay, this. Uh, oh, wait, it does, oh.
Good?
Hold up, I'm checking. In there. Right here, this looks cave-ish.
Yeah, maybe go this way.
Oh wow, this is an above cave area. Above water. Oh, there we go.
It does look pretty good.
Maybe not. There is another area I wanna check out all the way back there, I'm gonna check it out.
Oh, that was what I shot.
Wait, oh, I gotta get in here. What is this? I'm not going up there. I do not remember how, oh, okay, thanks. Okay, and then this way. Go. This.
Just gonna go check the shipwreck, it's near it.
Okay, okay, I'll, I'll go to it. Missed that. Yeah, nothing from, seem to be here either. Rip. Where is this ship at? Gonna check the surrounding area for caves.
Just one?
Isn't it a buried treasure map?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Guys, wanna know something interesting? I just invested in the stock market today.
What stock?
Uh, two stocks, I, uh, invested in Rogers, and I invested in Canadian National Railway.
Cool.
CNN. What? Just for fun, so I invested a hundred dollars, and so far, this is what I have, ninety-eight dollars and eighty-four cents. I, I have, I, I have already lost a dollar and sixteen cents.
Yeah, let's go, invest it.
You can gain it back overnight, it's fine.
Yeah, I know. Oh, where'd you go?
I went for, uh, do you see the island?
Yeah.
Just go to it.
Okay. Yeah, yeah, I see, I see, okay.
I saw like a little mini. Mini one, but I don't know.
Oh, it does go kinda deep, unless I'm tripping.
Hey, yo.
Nah, I don't think so.
Had to try.
Yeah, it's fair. Oh. I like the little bubble sounds in one point twenty on one four, feel like help me.
Still left.
You're not getting very lucky.
Some of our zombies on them.
No idea, I'm, I'm disoriented at this point, bro. Is that the shipwreck we just looted?
No, no.
Shit.
Okay.
Should I wait for you guys to do the trial chambers, or should I just do it?
Whatever floats your boat, I guess.
I guess.
I'll get the door tomorrow.
I'm not gonna loot the shipwreck.
Okay.
Honeycomb, bamboo.
Feeling lucky this way.
Hello?
Most depressing ocean mining section I've ever been on.
Oh.
Oh, never mind, that looks big.
Oh, it goes deep.
Hell, yeah.
Oh, it goes really deep.
Pause?
This is a good one.
Oh my god, oh, it goes straight down.
Watch it, watch it be it, busts this be it.
Ooh, I got a key!
Oh, his diamonds over here.
Oh, mine then.
Oh, it's great, oh, it's more here.
How veiny these are.
Calm down.
Hey, yo.
I get a little.
Do you think it's stacking a half, a half?
How much?
Uh, the stack might be enough.
It's stacking a half.
Over here, Bronze, where are you going?
Uh, what, are the diamonds up here?
Yeah.
Alright, thanks.
Iron chest plate with projectile protection.
Oh, this still goes down.
Oh, we have half a stack already, I think we high rolled them.
Oh, it's more over here.
Yes.
Hey. Yeah, fight each other.
I see lava, so it might be a cave. There's like a lava pool here.
There's nothing this way, go the other way.
This is so deep that it's worth going up.
Oh my god.
You know, if I close my eyes and just listen to this conversation, it would be the weirdest shit ever.
You could say that about pretty much any blue MC, VC, to be honest.
How big was the Avent?
Eight?
Twenty-eight.
Eight. Oh, this goes down to Obi. And over here too, oh, more diamonds.
I like when my shield doesn't pro- protect me at all, bro, like, I'm about to start tweaking.
I can hear you.
Are you good, cats?
I don't mind it.
Little mishap? Oh.
Also, I need a bit of iron, so, oh, I found more diamonds.
Oh, man.
But they're like, at the, uh, very end. It might be, oh, it's two, three, four.
I'm a wee. Oh, I see.
This could be another Avent. It is.
Nice.
Oh, fall, I'll go anyway.
Yo, this breeze is about to make me tweak.
I was about to run out of breath. Here, I'll go over here. Just very politely, quote unquote, shoved my head into the bottom of the door. Oh my goodness, we're over a stack, I think we're good.
No, we gotta go for more, more is better.
Oh, we have to duplicate the trim for each of us, that's gonna take forever.
Yeah, we have to duplicate the trim and it costs diamonds.
Yeah.
Oh, raw iron block.
Oh, okay.
I can't believe we got it raw.
Yeah.
I don't think I have anything else here. Well, let's wait, actually.
There's tons of like branches.
Freaking.
There's really stuff up here.
Oh, I didn't even see this.
Yo. Yo, this breeze is about to. Yo, I'm about to start twerking on.
Yeah.
Loser.
Not worth it. There's nothing to do.
You're a freaking piece of potato, bro. What do I look like? An idiot sandwich?
Shut the fuck up.
What?
What, we just had the idiot sandwich, dude? Where do we get out of here? I'm so lost.
Wait, wait, I think I don't, wait, maybe I don't know.
Bro, move, I'm gonna drown.
You have doors.
This is where we came in, this is not where we came in, we're actually lost.
I think we went over there later, which means we came from somewhere over here.
This little.
I found it, I found it, I found it. Hold on, I'm gonna drown before I get to the surface.
I won't. Okay, I might. I'm, I'm gonna be kinda close.
It is.
I feel it, Bronze. Not here.
Okay.
That spider just like tried to suicide now.
We need like, we need like another one of those holes, that would set us.
Yeah, that was, that was peak.
Okay, we've, we've been here before.
Oh no, it's all starting to look the same, I can't tell.
No, look, look to the right, it's the coral with the shipwreck in it. Let's, let's just go east, I don't think we went east. Okay, it's monument, go to the left of it.
We're good.
Mine if it's a good kill us.
Yeah.
Oh. This, is this?
I don't think we went straight left from the, the monument, I'm, maybe we should try to go this way.
I wanna go straight left, I'm down for that. Unless, unless you see something good.
Uh, I think you're going back the way we came.
This, you said straight left, I went left.
As in like, from the monument, hold on, I'm gonna try and, like, yeah, like, like this way, this way.
Okay, whatever. I don't really care, it all looks the same.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know where to go either. Oh.
Ravine there, what?
I see a ravine, I think we're looking at the same one. I don't think it has anything, though, yeah, it's like barely deep.
Oh, I don't know, I'm here. Oh, this goes deep, play it. Oh, this is the big one, do you see where my boat is?
No, I don't.
Uh, four hundred and twenty-four and negative five oh nine.
No, I'm not ready to die.
I'm sitting right above it.
No!